Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the October 7th, 2025 Public Work Planning Commission Work Session. I want to thank the commissioners for amazing job last month. In my absence, I had the pleasure of reviewing everything, not just in the minutes, but also watching the videos. So I do appreciate you all while I took some much-needed rest and relaxation. With that being said, let's get right into today's agenda. Madam Brick?
Good morning. No, good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. I want to start our meeting with introducing our newest staff member. Ms. Priscilla Ford is on board now. This is week two. Week two as our manager of current planning and zoning. Ms. Ford is from the Hampton Roads area, Chesapeake, if I remember correctly, and is returning home from Northern Virginia, where she recently completed her master's in urban and regional planning at Georgetown. So we're super excited about having her on board and all of the talent and skills and abilities that she's bringing with her. All right?
Welcome.
All right, we're going to start with Code Amendment 2501, and it is a request or proposal to amend the City Code, Chapter 9.1, the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District Ordinance, to include provisions to assess the impacts of climate change and see the sea level rise on proposed land development in the resource protection area during the review process as required by the Virginia State Code. The staff coordinator for this request is Ms. Valerie Melzone, and you will recall that this was deferred from your September meeting.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Valerie Melzone. I'm a principal planner for the city of Portsmouth. As you, this may look familiar to you, as a brief summary of these amendments were provided during the July Planning Commission Work Session. And as Dr. Russell stated, it was deferred from last month's hearing until today. So in 2020, amendments to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act, or Bay Act, were adopted by the General Assembly to require criteria for resiliency to be included in the performance standard implemented by localities under the Bay Act. Local implementation of the Bay Act is provided for in Chapter 9.1 of the Portsmouth City Code. Today, the city of Portsmouth is proposing to amend this chapter to include these provisions, which include criteria to address coastal resilience, adaptation to sea level rise and climate change, and the preservation of mature trees, and the planting of trees as a water quality protection tool for proposed land development in Chesapeake Bay Preservation Areas, or CBPAs. Localities are required to adopt these provisions by October 31st, 2025. Chesapeake Bay Preservation Areas include Resource Management Areas, or RMAs, and Resource Protection Areas, or RPAs. The proposed amendments predominantly affect RPAs, so as a reminder, these are comprised of title wetlands and shores, non-title wetlands, and a landward 100-foot buffer. I will now provide a summary of the proposed amendments. Section 9.1-10 of the ordinance includes general performance standards for development within RPAs. This section has been amended to include, first, a standard exempting living shorelines from the performance criteria of this section. This is to encourage their use as an adaptation measure and shoreline stabilization method. Second, standards requiring the preservation of mature trees and standards encouraging the inclusion of native plant species and buffer restoration plantings are proposed to be added. Lastly, adaptation measures are included as a permitted modification to the buffer area. This functions to provide standards for the design, installation, and maintenance of an adaptation measure included as part of a resiliency assessment, which we'll talk about in the next slide. Section 9.1-11 of the ordinance includes requirements for submitting a plan of development for projects within a CBPA. This includes the requirements for submitting both a major and minor water quality impact assessment. This section has been amended to include a requirement to submit a resiliency assessment for all proposed development projects within the RPA. The resiliency assessment will provide an evaluation of the impacts of sea level rise, category-one storm surge, and flooding on each project. Second, the standards specifying the required contents of a landscaping plan have been revised. They now require individual identification of mature trees and standards to ensure their protection during construction. Additional amendments were added throughout the ordinance to include standards to conform to the Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Program, which is called the VESMP. These became effective on July 1st, 2024. Definitions were added to Section 9.1-3 for new terms utilized as a result of the proposed amendments, and some existing definitions were modified to conform to the language used in the VESMP or other state and local ordinance definitions. The remainder of the amendments include corrections to Scrivener's errors and references to outdated cross-references. The amendments were reviewed by the Department of Environmental Quality, or DEQ. This is the state agency responsible for overseeing local Bay Act program compliance. DEQ's comments have been reviewed and incorporated as necessary since this item was deferred at last month's meeting. Staff is recommending the approval of the proposed amendments to become effective on July 1st, 2026. The amendments include all required criteria from the State Code, and in addition, the amendments will increase the accuracy and functionality of the ordinance. That concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Well, the mature trees, that really catches my attention because all mature trees are not healthy. And would you happen to know what was the state's thinking on that? Because we're already in an area that is low-lying, and the soil moves. So do we know what they're thinking was of saying preservation of mature trees? Because I know from personal experience, that's not a good thing. Because as trees get older, and with the type of soil we have in this area, the roots weaken. So if you can, do you know what they're thinking was?
Yeah, so mature trees, they do provide stabilization of the shoreline with their root structure. As they die, if they do die, they do become, you know, weak, but they do still, while they're decaying, hold that shoreline together. They are more concerned with preservation of healthy mature trees because what already existed in the ordinance is a provision where you may remove dead, diseased, and dying trees or hazardous trees. They just need to be identified as such by a certified arborist.
Okay, so you all have also worked in that part of the program to make sure you are, what I'll call pruning out.
Yes.
Weak and mature trees that are not healthy. Is that correct?
Correct. And since it was already in the ordinance and not a proposed amendment, we just didn't talk about it, but that is already in there.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Thank you.
This is from Ms. Melzone, who's also the staff coordinator, and it is a request by Mr. and Mrs. Stone to construct a swimming pool within the 100-foot buffer of the Resource Protection Area at 2811 Acres Road. Property is owned General Residential AR, and is further described as Tax Map Number 773, Parcel 14. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for low-to-medium-density single-family residential uses.
Hello again. I'm Valerie Melzone. I'm a principal planner for the city of Portsmouth. And the next application before you is a request for a Chesapeake Bay exception to construct a swimming pool and accompanying concrete deck within the Resource Protection Area, or RPA, at 2811 Acres Road. The Resource Protection Area is comprised of title wetlands and shores, non-title wetlands connected and contiguous to water bodies of perennial flow, and a 100-foot buffer, which is further divided into a 50-foot landward and a 50-foot seaward buffer. The proposed encroachment of an accessory structure, such as a swimming pool or deck, into the RPA is not permitted under Section 9.1-10 of the Portsmouth City Code. However, a Chesapeake Bay exception may be applied for to authorize an exception from the requirements of this section for approval by Planning Commission should Planning Commission find that the request meets the following requirements. The first being that the request is the minimum necessary to afford relief. This can be applicable, but is not limited to the size, type, or placement of a proposed structure. The second, the exception request must not be based upon conditions that are self-imposed. Third, granting the exception does not confer upon the applicant any special privileges. The exception request must be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. And lastly, if approved, reasonable and appropriate conditions must be imposed, which prevent the request from causing a degradation of water quality. The subject property is approximately 0.8 acres in size and is owned General Residential, or GR. The lot currently contains a single-family dwelling that was constructed in 1969 and a detached garage. The lot was legally recorded prior to October 1st, 1989, which is the adoption of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act and designation of Resource Protection Areas. The 100-foot Resource Protection Area buffer extends into the property from Lake Gene, and approximately 55% of the property is located in the RPA. The property is surrounded to the north, east, and west by single-family residential properties that are also zoned GR. Lake Gene abuts the property to the south. The applicant proposes to construct a 12.5-foot by 25-foot in-ground swimming pool with a concrete apron and deck to the rear of the existing single-family dwelling. The proposed swimming pool will result in a net increase of 780 square feet of impervious area within the Resource Protection Area. The proposed development is located entirely within the 50-foot landward buffer of the RPA and will not encroach into the 50-foot seaward buffer. The proposed development will result in a total of 1,200 square feet of land disturbance within the RPA, and the applicant is proposing to mitigate this land disturbance by establishing three planting units on site. The quantity and species selection of the proposed plants meet the recommendations of the Riparian Buffer's Modification and Mitigation Guidance Manual for Restoration and Establishment. Staff is recommending denial of the request as staff is unable to support development within the 100-foot RPA buffer that does not meet the exception criteria outlined in City Code Section 9.1-12C3. Staff finds that the proposal is not in harmony with the purpose and intent of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act, which is to limit land disturbance to the minimum area necessary to provide for the development of a single-family dwelling and necessary utilities. Should Planning Commission approve the applicant's request, staff has included conditions to ensure that the development meets the remaining review standards. To date, the Planning Department has not received any public comments regarding this application. That concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for questions.
The adjacent homeowners, do they have swimming pools?
They do not have swimming pools. If they do, it would be, I am not familiar with, you know, the surrounding neighborhood.
It's in Greenext. They don't have swimming pools. However, on that side of the lake.
Excuse me, I was still speaking. I'm sorry.
I was just trying to give you the information you were asking. Those people do not, but on the other side of the lake, they do.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I really do. None of those homeowners adjacent have swimming pools. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, because that was my understanding too. And then the next question is, if, and if that would open the floodgates for additional property owners to probably also try to pursue such a construction project, maybe, right?
So yeah, so some things to consider with the review standards is that each property, since it's an environmental feature, would be different from property to property, even adjacent properties. So as long as you found that on a case-by-case basis, you know, each one was the minimum necessary to afford relief, but you would want to make sure that number three would be the one that applies to granting the exception, will confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied by this chapter to other property owners in the RPA. So that would be the review standard you would be discussing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Glover, to your point, though the immediate adjacent properties do not have pools, there are some on the other side of the lake that do.
On the other side on Replica Lane, there are houses that have pools.
And it's very possible and likely that they preexist some of these pools.
I'm sure there were probably grandparents.
I mean, there's homes that are literally on the water over there that.
Wetlands.
Well, no, no, like literally at the lake right there. Like they border on it.
Right.
So yeah, there's a lot going on out there that's been for a while. Any other questions, commissioners?
Thank you.
Our next request is Use Permit Number 2509, and it is a request by Urban Life Substance Abuse and Outpatient Services to operate a drug and alcohol treatment facility at 21 Royal Street in the Urban Residential Zoning District. The property is owned by AKEI Investments and Holdings Limited Partnership and is further identified as Tax Map 349, Parcel 76. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for low-to-medium-density single-family residential uses, and the staff coordinator is Ms. Patrice Branch.
All right, good afternoon, planning commissioners. My name is Patrice Branch, and I am a planner with the city of Portsmouth. As mentioned, the application before you today is a request for a use permit to operate a drug and alcohol treatment facility at 21 Royal Street. The subject property is approximately 0.165 acres in size and contains a 1,300-square-foot building that was constructed in 1942. The structure was previously used as a single-family residence and includes six bedrooms and two bathrooms. The surrounding area is predominantly residential. Single-family residential uses owned Urban Residential border the property to the north, south, east, and west. The applicant is proposing to convert the existing residential building into a drug and alcohol treatment facility. The proposed facility will function as a clinically managed, low-intensity residential program for individuals with substance abuse diagnosis overseen by the Department of Behavior Health and Development Services. The facility will accommodate up to five residents who will reside for 30 days, with staff providing 24/7 supervision on-site. One staff member will be on-site during each shift to monitor residents, prepare meals, and to ensure the security of the residents. Residents will undergo routine drug testing monthly. Residents are allowed to leave the facility after programming hours, but are required to return by 9:00 PM each day. Visitors are also allowed on the property, but are required to exit the premise by 9:00 The submitted application includes details of the security measures planned to ensure the safety of the residents, staff, and surrounding community. These measures include closed-circuit television cameras that would be positioned at the facility entrance and in the interior common areas, as well as on-site footed security. Staff will also be trained in crisis prevention intervention to effectively manage conflict and de-escalate situations. No structure improvements are proposed for the existing building. The applicant plans to install a 24-foot-wide driveway and three parking spaces at the rear of the property in order to meet the off-street parking requirements. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for low-to-medium-density single-family residential uses. Staff recommends the denial of the applicant's requests. While the proposal supports several goals of the Comprehensive Plan by providing transitional housing that contributes to the improvement of public health, staff finds that the operational and physical aspects of the property raises significant concerns. Although the proposed plan will meet the minimum off-street parking requirements, the proposed parking does not account for overflow parking needs for visitors, as well as staff overlap. Additionally, due to the size of the property and the need to accommodate the required parking, there appears to be insignificant space to meet the landscaping standards and stormwater management requirements. In its current form, the applicant would need a waiver slash or an approved alternative landscaping plan to deviate from the required landscaping standards. Furthermore, due to the constraint in size of both the lot and the existing structure, it also limits the feasibility of providing designated recreational areas for residents. Overall, staff finds that the site is not suitable for the proposed intensity of the use. And one more thing. So this morning, we did receive a public comment. The public comment was from the property owner, and it was included in your work session materials. So, and that concludes my presentation. I will stand by for any questions.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the, um, questions. Did our, oh, the behavioral department and industry note that there's a need for substance abuse facilities in Portsmouth? Not the services, but the facilities?
So we didn't receive any comments from them to be able to speak on that.
Okay, and, that's fine. And are there any other substance abuse facilities in a urban residential area?
You mean like in a residential building like this? Not that I know of.
Okay.
Yeah, McLean Streets, I can't remember the, right there at the end. I remember that from my first way around.
So how many would you estimate? We don't have those numbers.
We can, we can get that information for you because they're all licensed by the State Department of Behavioral Health. So we can just do a, I can, I can have that for you by the public hearing.
Yes, that's, that's perfect, because if we didn't have any facilities in urban residential areas, then probably don't want to set a precedent. But now that I know we do, it's probably worth noting, are those facilities in a low-density area or high-density area? What's around them? What, what are the, I guess, the homes around, the neighbors around? What do they think of the facilities that are there? Are they conducting themselves in a manner that applies by, you know, laws and regulations? If so, then we possibly give this person a chance, but I just need more information to make a decision.
So speak briefly on that. The reason I mentioned the one before, not just from my previous experience on the commission, but it's also my street. It's the end of my street, and I believe, I believe we may even had voted against it. I would have to look back, because I personally was apprehensive about it. Now, that being said, there hasn't been noticeable issues from what I've seen. Of course, it is at the other end of my street, so it's not like I'm right there every day. But, but it hasn't become a public nuisance. I would say it hasn't risen to that level. So I will say that has, and this is right next to Mercy Drops on McLean Street. So I could say from that perspective, it hasn't become extreme. But I think there are many other points that were raised also as concerns about this particular property.
So when, when you had this certain application, it's commissioned, denied, and then the council approved it?
I honestly, I can't go on record and say exactly. It was probably five, six years ago, so.
Well, they must have approved because you say they are there, right?
Well, it was approved ultimately. I felt like it may have been denied, though, at planning, but that being said, I mean, we make a recommendation. That's our role.
Then my next question is for, for council. Can you all try to find that, I know all applications are different and independent, but can you try to find that application from, I guess, five years ago to see if planning staff denied or approved, you know, your recommendation for that? Just to see what was the thought process there, and if it did align similarly to this one. If it didn't, so be it. But just trying to get all of the facts and information so that we can make a good decision.
This is 556, McLean.
I can tell you that there was a recent controversy over the Fish and Point Rehab. It's a house in the Pinehurst neighborhood where I live. It was not received well. It was not welcomed, and approval was gotten after the fact. So that was, suffice to say, there have been no issues with them being in the neighborhood. My concern with this, when you said 1,300 square feet and six bedrooms, I was like, are you kidding me? And then on top of that, there's a living room and a kitchen. And am I reading that correctly, that that's two foot eight inches by four feet six inches is the size of that bedroom?
It's by feet, yeah. It's very small. It was originally, I believe, back in the day, a three-bedroom, one bath.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
All right, so I have the list that's gonna, it's, I have Portsmouth. There's a lot of them, but they're, I would actually have to count those that are substance abuse, because you were interested in the substance abuse ones. Okay, and I can do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next agenda item, commissioners, is a presentation of our Comprehensive Plan Audit, the 2018 Comprehensive Plan. We are super excited to bring this forward for your consideration. It's been a multi-month process, I would say almost a year, in active participation and active work to review our plan and to analyze the results. We're going to do your presentation for this agenda item in two parts. Mr. Landfair, principal planner, will discuss our process and how we developed the review, and then I am going to present the findings of the audit. I'd like to share and commend Mr. Landfair during the preparation of the audit. He served as the interim Comprehensive Planning Manager, and while that period has ended, we are very proud of this body of work.
Thank you. Thank you. So good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm Bill Landfair, principal planner in the Planning Department, and I'll start with a brief overview of the audit process before turning it over to Dr. Russell. So the city of Portsmouth is required to evaluate its adopted comprehensive plan, which is known as the Build 1 Portsmouth Plan, at least once every five years, to determine whether it should be amended. The audit examines projects completed since the adoption of the last comprehensive plan, which was in 2018, and it includes capital improvements, interdepartmental accomplishments, and feedback from public engagement meetings. The completion of the audit fulfills the city's statutory obligation to review its plan and provides a foundation for initiating the city's next long-range plan, which will be known as the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. What we found in undertaking the audit is that some significant planning efforts have been completed since the adoption of the last plan, and these relate to the advancement of major policy initiatives and significant private investment, which Dr. Russell will speak to in just a few minutes. The audit process coordinated by the Planning Department lasted about a year. The process employed a three-pronged approach to ensure that both technical achievements and public perceptions were considered in evaluating Portsmouth' progress with the plan implementation. This included interdepartmental review, whereby department directors were invited to provide self-assessments of action strategy implementation under each vision theme of the plan. To assist them in this regard, each department was provided with an advanced matrix outlining the relevant plan strategies. Number two, capital improvements review. This was an assessment of investments made through the city's Capital Improvement Program, otherwise known as the CIP, with a focus on infrastructure, public facilities, and resilience projects. These completed projects included transportation infrastructure, sports facilities, public safety facilities, recreation centers, and utility infrastructure. And finally, community engagement. This included community meetings with such diverse neighborhoods as Churchland, Ebony Heights, Westbury, and Waterview. It also included structured visioning exercises, where over 60 residents provided input on four quality-of-life dimensions: live, work, recreate- four quality-of-life dimensions: live, work, recreate, and raise a family. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Russell to continue with key themes of the comprehensive plan.
Okay. So the 2018 plan is developed around themes, one, fourth theme specifically, thriving, resilient, evolving, and equitable. And we would like to discuss the implementations around those themes, our accomplishments, as well as our challenges. And so, let me show you this slide, and then I have some, some context to go along with it. With respect to all of our themes, we started our evaluation with a discussion with all of the department leads and those strategic priorities that they were tasked with advancing. And what we found is that a number of the tactics, actually, most of them, were ongoing or no longer relevant. That's important from this perspective. While the 2018 plan is an award-winning plan, we received a National American Planning Association Award for that body of work. When we are looking at it some years later, it was hard to evaluate progress because the goals were mostly value-based. We would like to be a community of excellence, a community where persons can have access to recreational opportunities, not strong, smart goals. Alright? And so, what I want to discuss going forward is specifically with respect to these values, what did we accomplish? So the thriving goal, that focuses on us, Portsmouth being competitive economically, our efforts around downtown revitalization and workforce development. And we saw growth in our port and offshore and renewable energy projects. We saw significant waterfront reinvestment and downtown investment, primarily initiated by the private sector. And we saw more than $125 million in capital improvement investments in the areas of transportation and infrastructure improvements. With respect to the, I'm not going in the order of the slide, I mean, go in the order of my notes. The equitable focus is inclusion and fairness and access to housing and services. And what's interesting with the 60 touchpoints that we were able to engage in in the community is that really this theme seemed to be the most important feedback that we received from the members of our community in those meetings. Specific accomplishments in those areas include facility upgrades and youth programmings in our neighborhoods, and especially in our underserved neighborhoods. We provided improved access to community facilities, specifically our parks and our libraries and community spaces. Our resiliency theme focuses on infrastructure preparedness, our fiscal health and environmental adaptation. Our accomplishments in those areas included stormwater upgrades through our capital improvement program, stormwater and sewer. And with respect to our evolving theme, our focus is adaptability on our regulatory environment and technological systems. And so we've had advancements with respect to broadband expansion citywide, as well as updates to our zoning ordinance and improvements to our gateways, our entryways into the community. So landscaping and signage so that it has a heightened sense of arrival. We talked about our capital investments over this period from FY17 to FY25. The $125 million was mostly aligned with the themes associated with resiliency and thriving, and included projects in the areas of transportation, public safety, and utilities. We talked about the changes to our zoning ordinance to make the ordinance more user-friendly, whether that is the development community or our, our citizenry, our, not developers, I'll say, or not developers, citizens. And to include opportunities for density bonuses and things of that nature that would increase affordable housing opportunities. We did complete a poverty study, as well as a housing study in this window, that identifies what our housing opportunity needs are in our community, and that, we call that the missing middle. Sustainable development policies and social equity initiatives, we've previously talked about those. We've talked about renewable energy and those opportunities that are being encouraged and incentivized by the state. Portsmouth is certainly hosting the lion's share of a number of those opportunities statewide. We are growing in the area of our maritime and logistics industries as well. So if you think about what has happened in your own personal and professional lives in this window, it has been a challenge. I'll name one that has impacted everybody, and that's COVID. COVID has changed the world. And as Mr. Landfair has alluded to, that the comprehensive plan audit is an evaluation to determine, do we need to revisit the plan and do a wholesale update? COVID alone is a reason to revisit the plan and do a wholesale update. The world has changed, the way people work has changed, the way people play, recreate, live, raise their families, where they choose to engage in all of these activities is a reason for us to revise our plan, as well as the feedback that we've received from our community members. Community engagement, you know, I've heard, every time I, usually, I think the podium is a little bit that way when we are at the city council meeting, but recently, when I've stood before the council, the thing that is consistently said is, we want community engagement, and we want stakeholders involved in all of our processes. I believe, based on the feedback that we have gleaned from the audit, that we do that, and we need to multiply that times 10. Right? We want more engagement from our community members and every stakeholder in any process in our decision-making. So summary of input. One of the reasons, one of the most important reasons why you want community members who actually have to live with the outcome of these recommendations, to provide feedback into processes, is to see are we matching? Right? So the feedback that we're getting from the departments and Portsmouth agencies and state agencies is, you know, do we believe we're doing well, but those persons that we serve don't believe that we're serving them well? Right? So what I can share with you is, that's not the feedback that we got. The feedback that we received was twofold, and, you know, I'll, I'll share the bad and the good. Some of that was, what is the comprehensive plan? That's not good. That's never, that's never good. And so, with respect to making that a living and breathing document, we need to, to do better with that. But the feedback that, that we received, and some of it is, I would say it's more, not physical development, but just how do we want our communities to feel? How do we want to feel in our communities? What are the opportunities that, that we want in our communities? Crime, schools, and the appearance of our neighborhoods, our streets, our roads, those, those were consistent themes that came out of all of our community engagement meetings. Recreational opportunities and libraries were consistently rated as very strong. And so, as a, a person that, you know, recreates in the community and spends time in the community, I would say, yes, our parks and recreation activities, programs, they're, they're very strong. Public identity and signage emerged as a new concern. And so what was said more than once is, when citizens have visitors that come into the community, they will direct them to come to their homes or where they're going to visit to the most attractive route there, even though it might not be the most direct or the most convenient route. And so when we hear things like that, and that doesn't really line up with our own experiences, we will banter back and forth amongst the staff and say, hey, do you do that? Do you do that? When you're, when, you know, you invite family and friends to the area, and it's new, and that was a pretty consistent theme, that that does happen. So, we want, we put this picture in here because we wanted to show you the engagement exercise. So, we talked about what the plan is, we talked about what the recreation, we talked about the recommendations of the plan, and then we broke meeting participants up in small groups and asked them, how are we performing in this area? Right? Where you live, where you work, where you play, where you want to raise your family. And they came up with feedback, and then that feedback, we broke into consistent themes, and then that's how we, we found out that this group is most concerned about these themes, and they reported out. And so we did that a number of times over about a nine-month period. And so this slide really just summarizes again the feedback that we received from community members. Lighting, crime reduction, improved school performance, safe parks, senior and youth activities, cleanliness, sidewalks, beautification. I, I'm always tickled, and it happens all the time, where, when you have non-planners using planning terms, right? So that this, the cleanliness, sidewalks, beautification, you know, environment does influence behavior, and, and whether you're a planner or you're a nurse, you know what you like, and you know what feels good to you and feels welcoming. This slide summarizes our capital investments over the evaluation period. Most of those investments have occurred in the resiliency theme, that being transportation and infrastructure. $125 million overall. And so, key takeaways. The goals in the plan were ambitious. There were strategic priorities that we were not able to clearly determine, yes, we've completed that, no, we haven't completed that task. If we take nothing else away from the evaluation, it's going to be how we develop the goals for the 2040 plan. We're not saying that we, we not include value-based themes and value-based goals going forward, but they have to be complemented with smart, measurable goals. And so that is our body of work. We knew going into it that our recommendation was going to be a wholesale rewrite, update of the 2018 plan, to develop the 2040 plan, and we are already in the throes of implementing that effort. And I and Mr. Landfair are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Firstly, I want to say thank you. Great job to all on this. Yeah, I saw you, I'll call you in a moment. Great job on this overall. I always look, when we talk goals, growing up, I was an athlete. So you can't say if you win or loss.
You lost.
What's the purpose of playing the game at all? So I do, I do, I am encouraged by hearing that, that focus on these goals and, and the measurement sides of things. As, I remember when we started this many, many moons ago, building this plan. So I, I look forward to that, and as we look for outreach in the future, let's make sure we shift sometimes and pull in other areas that we might miss. I mean, you have your Newports that are technically an influential community in the area now, that, that may have very good feedback. So, but overall, just amazing work, and I look forward to, to the upcoming changes. Commissioner?
Commissioner Jigges would like to say a couple of things. And I'm very concerned about the wall that is being built in downtown Norfolk.
The what?
The wall, W-A-L-L.
Wall.
That, flood wall, I call it.
Okay.
Because as that is built, common sense tells me that water's going to push back towards downtown Portsmouth. So I'm, I'm making that comment because I would like to see something in the 2040 comprehensive plan that forms a proactive dialogue with the city of Norfolk in terms of the waterfront, because we share a common waterway. And anything that Norfolk does as it pertains to the downtown waters, it impacts on us and vice versa. Now, we certainly don't want to plan on the vacuum. But realistically, when we talk about the city of Portsmouth, the waterway that we share is with the city of Norfolk, and it needs to have an active dialogue with them as it pertains particularly to the downtown areas of Portsmouth and Norfolk. And as far as I'm concerned, they're like Siamese twins in terms of sharing that downtown waterway. And I would just like to see something about that worked into the 2040 comprehensive plan.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it for me.
A quick question to that point, it's great points. The, the mention in resilience part about the Virginia Coastal Resilience Master Plan, what input and what steps are taken in that from a Portsmouth perspective, to, to Commissioner Jigges' point? Like, is that, does that go through the same type of audit process? And then how has that affected? I know the seawall, for instance, is federal funds that were provided to the city of Norfolk. Are, are those changes adapted?
Well, the coastal resilience plan is a regional, it's a regional body of work that is coordinated by the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. My familiarity with that body of work is that it informs funding and grant opportunities that are state and federal. And so I can coordinate with them and get a more specific answer to that for you. But that is, you saw that, because that's a body of work that was completed in this plan period.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Commissioner?
So, you all said that you conducted a robust assessment. Was a risk assessment included in that, that highlighted what could prevent the city from achieving its comprehensive plan goals in the future? Can we create a risk, risk assessment?
So, as I'm familiar with risk assessments, I would say no. It's more what wasn't completed, what, what priorities, strategic priorities weren't completed, and why? And was it a purposeful decision to forego implementation of those recommendations? And then if so, why? So that, that was the level of assessment.
Okay. This is a recommendation, this, future, it can be staff, depending on your availability, or it could be the consultant, just to do a risk assessment about what I, what I just mentioned, so that we can have another tool in our pocket when making decisions of what's preventing us from achieving these goals. Like you said, one of them was 50% of the goals weren't smart. Right? That's one vulnerability. But we need to figure out what are the other risks that are prohibiting us from achieving these goals. And then that can then inform not only the comprehensive plan, but also our, our capital investment plan, so we know where resources need to be provided for, for each goal. And then also a gap analysis. So we have community priorities ranked, right? It says, and you may have already done it, I just, I just don't see it here. It says most cited needs, cleaners, sidewalks, beautification. What is our current beautification score, and where are we trying to go with that?
You said, did you say score?
Correct. I don't know if there is a beautification model that scores that, but just for example, where are we currently at, and where would we like to go, right? That's our, that's our strategy there, right?
Yes, sir.
So, having that also will provide us good information. And then, for the last thing, just to, I haven't seen any city do this, but in my book, we do this, just implementing a maturity model, so that, yes, we might be creating smart goals, but if our processes don't align to capture those goals, we, we would never hit them, and we would never have a metric tracking system and monitoring system to continue to meet and even exceed those goals. So there's maturity models out there, frameworks, you can search them up, and then tailor it to the needs of the comprehensive plan. But those are just the three recommendations that I had. It can be done by staff, or it can be done by the consultant, before we actually go ahead and write the 2040 plan. Because, yes, 50%, not smart metric goals, but we don't know the other risks, and where we need to allocate our resources. and where we need to allocate our resources to achieve those goals. When we come back to this in another five or 10 years, we're going to visit a new problem that could have been taken care of today.
Thank you.
Commissioner Glover?
Dr. Russell, the term smart goal has been referenced several times. I don't know that everybody in this room knows what a smart goal is. I don't want to make that assumption. But for those of you who are not familiar with that term, that is setting a goal that is specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound.
Yes.
As Dr. Russell said, you know, we've got this, we have this plan. And it's like, oh, let's do A, B, C. Well, how do we know if we've completed A, B, C? How do we know if we did it well? How do we know how that was received by the community? So I I I'm shocked that we didn't get that right the first time. But I'm very pleased that that gap has been recognized and addressed. And my hope is that going forward, every goal we set will be smart so that, you know, you don't know how you're doing if you can't measure it, right?
That's right.
One point of procedure, just just as a note, we are at one or at 1:22. So it's eight minutes till we start our main session.
Okay, I need to ask a question.
Okay, one moment, please. And so as we move into this, what is going to be the role of Planning Commission as we move towards this January 2026 date?
The role of the commission, well, I should go over this. I mean, this is a, we have a timeframe. And that's where our chair is is getting the the date for our start, right? We'll start waiting for that. But we've got a goal of 18 to 24 months to complete this body of work. So I think it was Commissioner Melvin said that as we write the 2040 plan, we are a long way from starting to write because we need to find out first, what is it that our community members want? And we'll do that as an ebb and flow process. This is, these are what we think the priorities should be. This is what we think based on existing conditions that these recommendations should be. And it's touch points all the way through a lot of stakeholder engagement to get buy-in and feedback, and then revisions. The commissioners' part in that will be as a participation or participant in that process. And along the way, you will get feedback from us, your team members, your staff members, about what we are hearing from the community.
Commissioner Giggins?
Thank you for calling on me. As I, once again, as I listen to the presentation, any longtime resident of Portsmouth, and I can probably understand it's covered someplace else. But how can we do the comprehensive plan for 2040 and not address flooding? I just, I just want to know how that how that would work. I mean, because that is a critical part of the quality of life here in Portsmouth. I mean, we have to be realistic about that. So I just want to know, how do we weave that challenge into this?
I see a lot of ways to do it because flood-prone areas would be impacted for development and future development and redevelopment. You can do it there. You know, we just finished a half-million-dollar study for flood resiliency along our corridors that that support our naval installations. And so there's, that's a body of work that informs our improvements that would need to be programmed into our capital improvement plan. So it's where I hear that you're saying it's a challenge. I think there are opportunities that are there that we just haven't realized today.
That you think it could be acknowledged some type of way?
I do.
In the 2040 plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner G, your sensitivity to time. My recommendation is that we we hand out the presentation about the vacant parcels, but we allow Mr. Boone, the zoning administrator, to go through that, the BZI cases. Is that, okay. All right. So I'm going to step out of the way.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Trevon Boone, zoning administrator for the city of Portsmouth. And pursuant to Section 15.2-2310 of the Virginia Code, the zoning administrator shall notify the local planning commission of applications received for special exceptions and variances. The planning commission may send a recommendation to the board or appear as a party at the hearing. All four agenda items are scheduled for public hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals on October the 22nd, 2025. Those agenda items are, okay, 2306 Lansing Avenue. And they are requesting a special exception to expand a non-conforming structure pursuant to Section 40.2-535, subsection B, subsection 8 of the Portsmouth zoning ordinance. The other item that will be before a Board of Zoning Appeals is 301 Fort Lane. And they are requesting a variance to authorize a 12-foot mesh anticlimb fence pursuant to Section 40.2-534, subsection B, subsection 2 of the Portsmouth City zoning ordinance. The next two cases are for 4501 Main Street. They are requesting a variance pursuant to Section 40.2-534, subsection B, subsection 2, and a special exception, 40.2-535, subsection B, subsection 13, to construct a detached single-family dwelling on a lot that's 30 feet in width or less. Stand up for any questions if you are beginning.
So we are having to go over the items for the vacant parcels at our next meeting.
Okay. Perfect. All right. We're going to adjourn this planning, or this work session. And I'll see you all in the main room momentarily. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, in the City of Portsmouth City Council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Six members, six members of the Planning Commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the September 2nd, 2025 public hearing, if there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion. Commissioner Curry?
I so moved.
We need a second as well?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the September 2nd Planning Commission meeting. And you will be voting electronically. Excuse me. Commissioners, you have to give Ms. King time to open up the vote before y'all start voting. Okay, so just give her like one second. Okay, and then and then we can proceed. Thank you. Okay. They, you probably need to just go ahead and read, do it because nothing registered on my screen. We had a motion, then a second. Mm-hmm. Okay, we're ready. Okay, we're ready. The minutes are approved by a vote of 6 to 0. Announcements of future meetings and conferences due to the statewide voting. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, at 12:30 PM, City Council Chamber, City Council Conference Room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. Our first case, CA-25-Z01, citywide. The city of Portsmouth proposed to amend City Code, Chapter 9.1, Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District Ordinance, to include provisions to assess the impacts of climate change and sea level rise on proposed land development in the resource protection area during the project review process as required by the Virginia State Code 9VAC25-830-155. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. And this case was deferred from our September 2nd, 2025 public hearing. Ms. Malzone, may come forward and present the application at this time.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Valerie Malzone. I'm a principal planner with the city of Portsmouth. In 2020, amendments to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act, or Bay Act, were adopted by the Virginia General Assembly to require criteria for resiliency to be included in the performance standards implemented by localities under the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. Local implementation of the Bay Act is provided for in Chapter 9.1 of the Portsmouth City Code. The city of Portsmouth is proposing to amend this chapter to include these provisions, which include criteria to address coastal resilience, adaptation to sea level rise and climate change, the preservation of mature trees, and the planting of trees as a water quality protection tool for proposed land development in Chesapeake Bay preservation areas. Localities are required to adopt these amendments by October 31st, 2025. Chesapeake Bay preservation areas include Resource Management Areas, or RMAs, and Resource Protection Areas, or RPAs. The proposed amendments predominantly affect RPAs, which are comprised of tidal wetlands and shores, non-tidal wetlands, and a landward 100-foot buffer. I will now provide a summary of the proposed amendments. Section 9.1-10 of the ordinance includes general performance standards for development within RPAs. This section has been amended to include, first, a standard exempting living shorelines from the performance criteria of this section. This is to encourage their use as an adaptation measure and as a shoreline stabilization method. Second, standards requiring the preservation of mature trees and standards encouraging the inclusion of native plant species and buffer restoration plantings are proposed to be added. Lastly, adaptation measures are included as a permitted modification of the buffer area. This will provide standards for the design, installation, and maintenance of an adaptation measure as included as part of a resiliency assessment. Section 9.1-11 of the ordinance includes requirements for submitting a plan of development for projects within Chesapeake Bay preservation areas. This includes the requirement for submitting both major and minor water quality impact assessments. This section has been amended to include a requirement to submit a resiliency assessment for all proposed development projects in the resource protection area. The resiliency assessment will provide an evaluation of the impacts of sea level rise, category 1 storm surge, and flooding on each project. Second, the standards specifying the requirements of a landscape plan have been revised to require individual identification of mature trees and standards to ensure their protection during the construction process. Additional amendments were added throughout the ordinance to include standards to conform to the Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Program, or VESMP, which became effective July 1st, 2024. Definitions were added to Section 9.1-3 for new terms utilized as a result of the proposed amendments. Existing definitions were modified to conform to the VESMP and other state and local ordinance definitions. The remainder of the amendments include corrections to Scrivener's errors and references to outdated cross-references. These amendments were reviewed by the Department of Environmental Quality, or DEQ. This is the state agency responsible for overseeing local Bay Act compliance. DEQ's comments have been reviewed and incorporated as necessary since this item was deferred at September's meeting. This concludes my presentation. And I will now stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Planner Malzone? Great, thank you. I will say one comment. No, recently, we've been seeing a lot of houses in the outer banks fall into the waters. And they asked one lady, why would you build this on the beach? She said, when I built this 30 years ago, this, the beach was another 20, 30 feet out. So I think it's important that we take, keep this in mind as our our shorelines are really critical. The, we have items on the docket today as well as in the past few months and probably upcoming that really address these items. So I appreciate the work that you all are doing to keep this updated. And we look forward to future updates as needed. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CA-25-Z01. I have no registered speakers. If there's anyone here who would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any additional discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second. And just remember to hit the RTS button if you want to raise your. Commissioner Glover?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Taylor?
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve CA-25-Z01. And you will be voting electronically.
You'd be scared to vote.
This item is approved by a vote of 6 to 0. Our next item, CBE-25-Z02, Green Acres. G and R Stone request a Chesapeake Bay exception to construct a swimming pool within the 100-foot buffer of the resource protection area at 2811 Acres Road. The property is Zoned General Residential, GR, and is further described as Tax Map 773, Parcel 14. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for low-to-medium density, single-family residential uses. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. And will the applicant or representative please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon. Hope you all have a good afternoon. My name is Greg Stone. Our stone is my better half, Rachel. So I, I guess I just talked through this. What we're going to, what we, our plan is, okay. So you could see our house there, the lot. Our, the the pool itself, when it's completed, will be, there we go, will be within the 50-foot buffer. It doesn't, it doesn't, so if you get the 100, we're within the 50. So we're not going to be in the lower 50. Is that how I described it? Right, okay. I just want to make sure. We have, we got everything from from this Valerie as far as plants we have to put in, trees, and we'll adhere to that. The only pain in the neck is trying to find those, those, those plants. They don't sell them at Lowe's and Home Depot. So, so Coleman Nurse, we found a couple. And there's one in Norfolk. But anyway, we were out looking for them to, so we can be in, be in the right, as far as, oh, I'm sorry. You can see in in the blue, trees. I can, so those will be added in accordance with everything else we have around the house. Completely around the house, there in that green along the house is a bunch of low-lying plants. And then we have a couple of big pine trees out there, too. This is my pool builder.
Yeah.
Lawson, he could explain the proposed digging and and any kind of. Lawson, he could explain the proposed digging and any kind of that side of the house.
The proposed pool is fiberglass pool, limited excavation site. We have exact dimensions already, exact dig plan already. It's a little bit different than a site-built pool. We don't have to disturb as much land by any means. The areas of green will be the land disturbance, and we will minimize that. We'll keep everything within the landward side of the fifty-foot R P A. We'll do all of the plantings, you know, based on the disturbances and those type of things. But everything will be within that, and like I said, our actual excavation will be to an exact mold, essentially. We have an exact dig plan. We don't need to overdig for any reason. Like I said, it's a fiberglass pool, so it gets set in the whole.
Can you talk into mic, please?
I'm sorry. Did you catch any of that? I said, so essentially, it's a fiberglass pool. The dig plan is set to a specific size, so there's no overdigging or excess digging that's needed, you know, versus like a site-built pool. The limits of disturbance will be what we stay within. Even with equipment usage, we won't go outside of that, and, you know, we'll take care of all the plantings and all the type of things that are necessary. But, yeah, it's, you know, the actual area of disturbance will be pretty limited. We're not going to do too much disturbing, based on where we're digging and knowing that we're digging the exact footprint of a pool that's being delivered.
So the pool, you know, to help men buy, the pool, when it's put in, it's gonna be craned in.
Yeah.
So it's not like that we're gonna be dragging through and then have to set it up. It'll be crane in the front driveway there, and then we'll just put it down like that, so less, so it's only gonna be one little small excavator that'll be digging that, and then, and any excess that would thing, it will be trucked out.
Yeah. Did you guys have any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Sure.
How long have you decided to embed this residence?
About seven and a half years. It was April of eighteen, two thousand and eight.
Seven and a half years.
What's that?
I said it was about seven.
About seven, yeah, just over seven, seven and a half years.
Okay. Was there any particular reason why you had not tried to request this variance?
Before that, we didn't think about putting one in, and it's just me and my wife now, two dogs, and so we're just, you know, we're getting our age, so it's just gonna be us. So we're just, you know, hot days, you know, cutting the grass and jumping in the pool and cooling off, but other than that, no reason other than just, you know, we plan on staying there, so.
I was wondering if it was something that had been medically recommended by your physician. So I know sometimes there is that medical component that needs a applicant to need to request to embed a pool.
I know myself thinking about that. I have fusion back surgery, so a bunch of my vertebrae is just one big vertebrae, and so I do a lot of swimming, so lap swim. But here, I'll be able to, like, hold on at least kick back and forth, because I can't run, because my feet are always numb. So not from a doctor, but just for myself, you know, just to help that, so.
Thank you.
And it tires out the dogs, at the end of the day, when they're in there swimming.
Commissioners, any additional questions?
Did we miss anything? I know.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item C B E dash twenty-five dash zero-two. I have no registered speakers. If there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any additional discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second.
I do, Chair. I don't know how much. Idea.
Oh.
See?
Commissioner Curry?
I'm obedient.
I appreciate.
How much feet of his yard is in the buffer?
The question was, how many feet of his yard is in the buffer? I believe the entire yard is within the hundred-foot, right?
Yeah, the hundred buffer runs about halfway through that house.
Yep, so the hundred-foot buffer, just so everyone here on the mic, runs through the middle of his house. And as you look at the satellite videos or satellite photos of that area, it's pretty common in that neighborhood. Any additional questions?
So I don't know if I should be asking Dr. Russell, or how much would that affect in digging inside of that, in the buffer? If this, it seems that all that's going through everybody's property.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. These are two examples.
Hold on one sec.
Not to get this video. This here, these are two examples of the exact neighborhood that have the same overlay on the same body of water that have pools already. And both these homes, I mean, I can hand it to you, both these homes are fully inside the R P as well, and here's their pool.
Can I see that?
Yes, sir.
Do you know how many other people have pools in that particular neighborhood?
There's at least three or four around that small man-made lake.
You mean on the opposite side, right?
Uh, I'm not, yeah, there was one on the opposite side, correct.
What's that?
No, my understanding was those were pools on the opposite side.
Yeah, there are two straight across from him, on the opposite side of that man-made lake.
But are those in the buffer?
Yes. They're in that photo I handed you. That's the buffer, and then there's the Google map of the other.
Thank you. I think that was all. Dr. Russell, did you have any statements on this one?
I believe Commissioner Curry was, question was, what's the impact? So if this pool would not be able to be built unless the commission approves the exception. So that's the impact. It's a zero sum, like, they can't do it without your approval because of the impact, because of the relationship of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation District Buffer.
Got you.
The House predated the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act.
So building this pool, would it affect any natural life? Would it affect anything as far as water, or?
So the buffer, the intent of the buffer is to maintain the natural environment so that it acts as a water quality filter.
Right.
So if the buffer is impacted, you know, meaning, you know, there are improvements in the buffer that create impervious area, the applicant is required to offset that with other improvements. And this applicant is proposing various landscaping, planting material, yep, that's outlined here, the maples, the dogwoods, and the inkberry holly to mitigate the impact of the proposed impervious improvements.
Thank you, Dr. Russ. Commissioners, is there any additional questions? If not, we're in need of a motion and a second. Commissioner Glover?
For C B H twenty-five dash two, motion to approve the amendments.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Without a second, the motion dies without a second. We still need another motion in order to continue through the agenda today, though. Commissioner, Commissioner Melvin?
I just want to mention to the commission that during our work session, we mentioned that the houses across the lake may have been grandfathered in, and that's why they have swimming pools, but we're not for sure. So I guess once we obtain that information, if council contains it, they can make a better informed decision.
Well, I mean.
But what we have right now is what we have.
I mean, so would you like to make a motion, Commissioner Melvin?
Yeah, I would just, motion to deny, and if we get the information that those members were able to build a pool after, you know, this ordinance was established, then I see no reason why the applicant can't build their pool.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Point of clarity, please.
Yes.
I thought I, someone said that.
It is our belief that they were prior to.
Yeah, that they were prior to.
And as a point, also as a point of clarity for the entire commission, remember, we are a recommending body, so it still will go on.
Correct.
So even if it is denied, oh, no, I'm sorry, no, this is, this does not go to city council. This is final stage here.
Chairman G, may I make a?
Yes, Director Russell.
A deferral would allow the staff to evaluate the lots on the opposite side of the water body to determine, to answer that question that might impact the commission's vote on this matter, and more importantly, that wouldn't require the applicant to resubmit a fee for reconsideration.
So with that being said, Commissioner Melvin, would you like to change your motion, or is there a friendly amendment to the motion?
Before I amend the motion, I would like to know if the applicant is willing to defer.
So for clarity, where the commission, some of the commissioners are leaning towards is finding out a little bit more research about the other pools in your area, as they aren't comfortable with voting one way or the other right now, just to see if those pools in the area predate the Chesapeake Bay.
I'm fairly confident one of the ones that I presented is a newer pool. Yeah, I'm almost certain of that.
So the date we're talking about, when the Chesapeake Bay?
No, no, he's talking about the date of those other houses that have pools.
No, but I'm saying, to what date are we comparing?
I would recommend the next meeting, which is.
One motion, no, no, no. He's asking when the Chesapeake Bay, Director Russell?
I graduated college that year, it was like eighty-nine ninety.
I mean, I would, I would ask if, you know, if possible, if we could approve, I mean, we're gonna keep everything very minimal. We're gonna do, actually, we're doing more planting sets than are required, like, as far as mitigation, we're already offering more planning sets than are required for that amount of land disturbance, just, you know, essentially, just, you know, to help out, essentially. And Mr. Stone's elevation is fairly high, so we're not sitting at water level, you know, already. We're already elevated pretty high above this man-made lake. So, but, you know, then again, you know, it's up to you guys. I just kind of wanted to give a little bit of information.
And I think his final question was, and though I can't recommend one way or the other, is Chair, if you would be okay with us deferring to next month, so we can do a little bit more of research on it.
I mean, if we don't, then it means it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen, right? I mean, I'm, I mean, and I guess, I guess I just want to understand is, I know they always talk about the hundred-foot, but it can be approved within the fifty.
It can.
So, so I don't understand, I mean, if it's within the fifty, why it, why we wouldn't allow it to happen?
And I think key point is to that, it still requires the approval. So for them to feel comfortable with that approval, they're asking, to their, to their credit, they're asking if you are comfortable with them deferring for a month to November eighteenth, I believe is our date next month.
And I was, like, getting back to the point of the actual fiberglass pool, too, it's very minimal land disturbance versus building a concrete pool, for instance. So it's an exact hole that you dig, we set it in, and we fill around it. So it's not, there's no overdig, there's no, you know, excess disturbance that's going on. It's very minimal to, specific to just that hole that's being dug.
Understood.
Yeah.
I guess I'm just wondering what's, what issue we have with not approving it? Because it's within the hundred, or because it's within the fifty?
Because it's within the hundred.
But it can be approved, my understanding.
It can be.
If it's in the first fifty, you can't, you almost can't do it.
They need two motions to approve.
You need him to approve it.
They need two motions to approve it.
But if it's in the fifty, y'all can do it.
We can't, and that's why we're asking for the.
So then I'm, I guess the question is, what is, why, why don't you want to approve it?
The commissioners are asking for more time for more research on the existing pools in the area, just to feel more comfortable to approve it on that, within that fifty.
So that's the determining factor?
I mean, could we ask him if he would mind?
Well, I mean, he stated, I mean, respectfully, we've kind of given you all your time on it.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, but I guess, I guess just going away is that if they were done before, then it's definitely a no for me, right? Because.
If that's the way the commissioners vote, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I should, yeah, yeah.
You either allow them more time, or it's, or.
Right, right, but my point is, if those pools were built before that, which I'm pretty sure they weren't, because they look pretty new, if they're before then, then, then we can't, then you're gonna come back and say no completely.
It is best for us at this time to get more research. Instead of denying it today, give us time to next month, so we can make an adequate decision, so we make sure that if it is approved or denied, that we've given our due diligence to ensure that we give you fairness, if you don't mind.
Okay, yeah, I'm just kind of wondering, see what I gotta do, my homework also.
Because I believe.
You're in a good place.
That's the question I have, not, not take away, I'm just trying to find out why.
No, we do appreciate the inquisitive nature, but.
I asked that question, because I believe Dr. Russell said that there was a, or someone said there was a financial burden on the applicant.
No, no, that's, that's if we, if we deny, and he had to reapply. By us deferring, there's no fees necessary.
Perfect, okay, so then I recommend deferral to next meeting, November fourth.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
November eighteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Have a motion and a second to defer C B E dash twenty-five dash zero-two until our November the eighteenth meeting, and you will be voting electronically. This item is deferred by a vote of five to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item, U P dash twenty-five dash zero-nine, Fairville, Urban Life Substance Abuse and Outpatient Services request a use permit to operate a drug and alcohol treatment facility at twenty-one Royal Street in the urban residential U R zoning district. The property is owned by A K E I Investments and Holding L P, and is further identified as Tax Map three forty-nine, Parcel seventy-six. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for the low-to-medium density, single-family residential uses. The staff coordinator is Patrice Branch. Will the applicant or representative please come forward, state your, and present your application at this time?
Yes, good afternoon, how you doing? My name is Joe Hector, and I'll be, you know, represented for Urban Life Substance Use and Outpatient Services.
I'm sorry, could you please repeat your name for the record?
Joe Hector, H E C T O R.
Thank you.
And Urban Life is gonna be a residential three-point-one services for adult substance use program, and this program would be have staff twenty-four-seven. It's gonna be house six adults with substance use and corollary condition of mental health. We will also have a nurse in there for medication administration, and it's gonna be, also, it's gonna be managed by our department, D B H S. It's gonna be our Medicaid-affiliated program as well, and the program, like I said, is gonna be on substance use. We also have substance use, real life prevention programs in there. It's gonna be talking about substance education for young men that to use again, and we also gonna be assisting those individuals with employment services and different resources within the community to help them to self-regulate on their own. And the program would be, each individual will be there, like I say, it's gonna be a Medicaid program, so with a Medicaid program, they'll be here for either three months or four months at a time, based on M C O approval.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Curry?
I just want to know, what condition is this house in?
Meaning?
I mean, maybe my eye is lazy, but it's like, you blow on, it's gonna fall apart. I mean, is it in good condition?
I mean, is it in good condition?
Yes, it's good standing condition, yes, sir.
How many clients?
Six, it's going to be six clients.
And this is residential crisis?
Yeah, it's going to be a residential, it's a three-point-one, which is a residential program, it's considered residential program. It's like, you know, pretty much like a group home setting, you're going to have, you know, family therapy in there, you're going to have individual therapy in there, you're also going to have group therapy for these individuals as well. But according to the DBH guidelines, it's considered as a residential program, it's in that guideline.
Okay, will, will you be having outsourcing them to go to PHP, something to be, outside of these?
No, that's going to be involved in every, if they're in a three-point-one setting, they will have to go to a PHP. Because a three-point-one is equivalent to that type of, you know, setting, intensity.
And it's partial hospitalization for people looking for the.
Right, yeah, I know what PHP is.
Okay, my colleagues may not, so I want to make sure. Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mrs. Joe.
Commissioner Melvin, did you know, no longer, okay, Commissioner Glover?
Um, yeah, I, just for point of clarification, this house is thirteen hundred square feet. And the ask is that there would be six residents and one full-time employee that would be living in this house. And there would be a living room and a kitchen that's taking up part of that thirteen hundred square feet. My understand, and please correct me if anything, I'm, my understanding is that residents will be free to come and go?
Yes, they'd be free to come and go, but however, like I said, you would have, you know, it's twenty-four hour staff there. And you also would have a group in there, it would be structured, you know, structured setting.
And what is, what is the plan? I know something that was mentioned was that the residents would be allowed to have visitors. I'm concerned about the impact on the neighborhood with that. My other concern is outside recreation area, that looks extremely limited as well.
Yeah, we're doing, they wouldn't be able to have visitors, they can't have visitors like overnight, that's because due to confidentiality of other people in the, in the house. You cannot, you know, you won't be able to do that. If they have visitors, visitors will be, of course, outside, if they have family members that may be visiting, anything like that, outside. That's not on that list when you're doing a family therapy inside, you know, so that's, that's totally different, they won't have any visitors inside. It's not, visitors can just come and go, and it's not, it wouldn't be allowed that way. It's very structured setting, you know, in a three-point-one program.
Okay, and what about the outside recreation?
Outside recreation actually be, we'd have, we'd have a van there, so we'll be taking them on groups and things like that, or social outings.
No, no, I meant on-site, on, on the property.
Yeah, but outside recreation may be like if they're outside, but like I said, would be staff monitoring them, you know, there. So their recreation would be, you know, like I say, if you have any recreation on-site, it would be, you know, probably something really small. You know, that they may be going to back or something like that, you know, or maybe, you know, watching TV, recreation activity, playing, playing on board games or things like that on the inside of the house, not just hanging out, you know, it wouldn't be anything like that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jigots?
Yes. What is the reason that it is not structured so that the participants stay overnight? Instead of this going back and forth every day, or whatever they want to do?
No, they're, they're living there.
They are living there?
Yeah, they, they, yeah, they're living there, I'm talking about visitors, visitors cannot be overnight, that's what she was asking me earlier.
But they, so you're telling me.
Where the clients can be there overnight, and we'll have staff overnight, staff will be there twenty-four-seven.
Let me catch, catch up, give me a second. So you're saying that the participants in the program?
Yes.
During the day, they are not allowed to go and come, they stay right there at the facility?
Oh, they can go and come, but it has to be, they have to be with a staff member, would have staff be involved with those individuals as well. Whereas like, say if they're going out to like, you know, going to employment search or things like that, would have staff be taking them with them. Medication management, you know, those type of things, it'll still be monitored, it's not that they're just hanging out and doing whatever they do. No, it's not, it's not, it's very structured program, a three-point-one program is a very structured program. Whereas individuals will be, you know, even their, they're housed there in that facility. You know, even if they're going for medication management and things like that, they will have somebody to accompany, accompany them to those, to those areas.
I just have one more question. Because I'm just trying to understand, why is it, when they have visitors, that the entire process does not take place within the facility instead of, with their visitors, they can be outside on the steps or whatever, when, when people come to visit them?
Well, we, we're not going to have them be, just be outside in the steps, if they have, when we talk about visitors, I think she was asking me.
Family?
Right, family, would have family therapy, that's actually would be a structured program, they actually be inside doing therapy with, with, with the actual therapist, they will be inside doing that therapy. But yes, they may be outside, have to spend a little time with that, but then their family would have to leave the property. They just can't hang out at the house due to confidentiality of the other, other clients, that's, that's what you're asking.
So let me just make sure I'm understanding, there's someone in the facility?
Yes, they would have several people in the facility, staff.
And, and, and they have a relative?
Yes.
So the relative can come to visit them, and if the.
Has to be approved relative, just not anybody just pulling up and hanging out.
What do you consider approved relative?
Due to family therapy and things like that, they would have to contact us, we would have to approve them, we just don't have anybody just pulling up, hanging out.
Would you have done a background check on the visitors?
Yes, that's, we'd have to do all of that, we have to make sure that these people are approved, you know, they, they're just not somebody just, they're just pulling up, hanging out, things like that. They'd have to feel after they, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Curry?
Let me help in this because I run three of them, so let me, let me help get some clarity on how the ACM three-point-one program goes. The majority of the time with substance abuse in these particular neighborhoods, as running three of these, we have no issue, no violence, nothing within the community whatsoever. We have some in Portsmouth, we have many in Hampton Roads on the peninsula side. And due to the problem having issues with clinics, they have now offered and to do these in homes to have a better programs. We know we are in an epidemic here in the state of Virginia, especially in the seven-five-seven with opioids and with crisis of substance abuse. And so utilizing these homes are another way, not one say a group home, but a way allowing limit conditions also helping getting these people off of the streets to provide a, a, a program and a structured environment. Most of the times, you do not have any relatives coming to visit them whatsoever, they're just trying to get them help, all right? And most of the time you can, the, the clients are allowed to leave the premises and they are allowed to come back into the premises if they need to visit anybody else. But I've been doing this for twenty-one years, and we have not had any incident of any visitor or anybody else violent or bringing any type of thing in, because these people are here knowing they cannot jeopardize their living condition and the programming. If they use or cause anything, it will cause them to be put out of their program. So it is structured, it's by D-MAS, and we have to follow those structures, when trying to give somebody a little bit of clarity to understand how this mental health stuff goes, this is not your normal housing and where, or hospital. These people are not imprisoned or in captivity, they do have the opportunity to leave and the leisure to come, come in, they go as they please. However, there is a structured particular environment.
May I respond?
Yes, Commissioner Jigots?
My concern is, it's a neighborhood. And I'm going to make the assumption that there are families with children in that neighborhood, and that concerns me greatly. Now, I'm also hearing two different answers. And correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Curry, I think you said that they can come and go. The participants, participants in the program, they are allowed to come and go, is that correct?
In my program, my ACM three-point-one program, that's the same one that we're running, they are allowed to go. Per the policies and procedures, they are allowed to come and go, however, there is a structured environment, a leave and timing. They're not out all types of night, hanging out all time of the night, it's a structured environment, and these people are there to get help. They're not being imprisoned, they are volunteering themselves to get in service, to get help, and they know if there's anything they, they do or contributes to rules and regulations, they will be put out of the program and the housing. And many people don't want to jeopardize that housing or that help, so they're going to do everything they can to be compliant. We have several homes in the city of Portsmouth right now in several neighborhoods, right now with children, with no issues, no violence, no problem whatsoever.
Do you have one in your neighborhood?
What, I do.
And.
You do.
Can I say something?
And I have one right in the corridor where I live, so, yes, I do, and we have no issues, no crime, no problem whatsoever. And I'll put another one there.
And they also would be, you know, they, they actually be, you get, we have random drug tests and things like that, that happens, you know, so, that have to happen. So it's just not like they are just hanging out, and I think that's what people may have that, that type of thinking. But that's not the case at all. Three-point-one setting is a very structured program, and to help the individual to get back on their feet, to get, you know, self-regulated. You know, to assist a person with getting back with housing and things like that, getting, getting their lives back. It's a very structured program that's involved, you know, actually helping that person to evolve in a very diverse manner.
I did have a question for you. Urban Life Substance Abuse and Outpatient Services, how long have they been operating in this field?
They've been operating the field now for about five years, we actually have a two-point-one program that's in Norfolk area.
So, so one other facility currently, or?
Yes, this is two-point-one program.
Okay, well, just one other location with the two-point-one program, right? Okay, perfect, no, that was all I was wondering, thank you.
All right.
Was there any other question, Commissioner Jigots?
But I've actually been in the field for over forty years.
Okay, thank.
So, and when the substance use field.
Yes, I need clarification again, with your facility, will the participants be allowed to come and go during the day?
Yeah, they can come and go during the day, but it's not like they are just hanging out, they have to say, you know, like, where they're going, it has to be something that's productive. It's not that they're just, you know, going out to just hang out. You know, and I think that's what a lot of people are sensitive, they're just going to go out, they're going to hang out on the streets and things like that. No, that's not the case at all.
Commissioner Melvin?
Dr. Russell, just want to make note, if we could please provide counsel with factual reports of how many substance abuse service, services, facilities are in residential areas? And their impacted neighborhood and environment such as with police reports? So that we can have some actual statistics and factual information here in the city of Portsmouth. I think that will help them make a better informed decision here. And then one more question for the applicant, why this location and not anywhere else?
Well, with this location, we could ask where the owner had the house, and that's one of the purpose of, of the location. And within this location, we would also have, you know, be able to, be able to supervise a lot better. Because I also live in Portsmouth, so, you know, so I'll be able to be there, you know, a lot, you know, more as well. I don't live in Norfolk, so that's why that location.
Thank you, I think that's all the questions, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP dash twenty-five dash zero-nine. I do have several speakers, as I call your name, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Joseph Harris.
Okay, good afternoon, I'm Joe Harris, I live thirty Royal Street. I'm asking to decline this. Royal Street is a narrow street, parking, if you had extra parking along there, it would, it would hurt. We have young kids down on that same side, they have to commute to the bus stop, which is on Hanson and Royal. And, and they are small kids. And to have this traffic coming through, which I don't frown on people trying to do something for the city because my brother and I even help out people on the street. But I'm going to tell you, I have a personal reason for this, because I've had a crack house that caught a fire, it was firebombed. And it destroyed my house, I lost my dog, my wife was taking a shower. We came out January the nineteenth, nineteen ninety-four, the coldest day of the year. And so I'm apprehensive because the lady that ran the crack house was in her seventies. We tried to get her out and she died with her arm out the window. This went national, this happened in Philadelphia. This was the biggest thing since the move situation, so I'm a little apprehensive for this being on, on my street. I don't really, I figured there should be better places for this. There are more of a commercial area where children are residential, it wouldn't be a residential area, it'd be more of a commercial area. And I think better places should be tried to, just because this man is trying to rent his house out. There have been several owners or renters at that particular property. We have been on that, living on that street for, since nineteen fifty-three, fifty-four. And this is, like I said, the street is narrow, we never had paved streets, we don't have sidewalks. And like I say, the kids have to walk in the street to get to the bus stop. So I'm asking the planning commission to thoroughly examine this and think this through. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Our next speaker is Matthew Harris. Please come forward, state your name and your address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
My name, my name is Matthew Harris, I live at thirty Royal Street, and good afternoon. My opposition to this is basically the same as has been already spoken of. The bus stop at Hanson and Royal was moved there this year because a few blocks towards Truxton Avenue is another house doing the same thing, I was told. And the bus stop was moved from Wall Street to Hanson. So, and we have a lot of young kids now. We have some on the corner, Royal, Hanson, and we have some near Portman Boulevard that have to walk past this house. Parking is a problem. And this house was used before as a sort of a halfway house. So that's why I'm asking that it would be denied, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Our next speaker, Phyllis Brown, come forward, you have up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, my name is Phyllis Brown, and I live at sixteen Royal Street. And I appreciate a lot of the comments and a lot of you made, and you answered a few of my questions. But basically, everybody wants to feel safe in their home, everybody. You want your home safe, you want your people safe, you want your property safe. And I'm a firm believer in second chances. And I'm curious about the decision to put that type of home on our street. Our street has multiple families with young children, and quite a few with seniors, myself and older. And I think maybe that is not the better place for it. And what you said about the twenty years of not having any incidents, I don't want the first incident to be on Royal Street. And I was also considering what type of supervision that they were talking about having, how much. much freedom they have, how much staff stays on a regular basis and how many, when they go and come back, how do you know they don't go with and come back with a little more than they left with? And I'm thinking maybe this is not the right place for this type of facility at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandra Boulton.
My name is Sandra Boulton and I'm at 33 Royal. And I agree with a lot of my neighbors. I know about drug issues and I know people need help, but as we also said, it could be a better place, a commercial area. And as you said, you have staff there, but you, he said one staff person for six people. And I don't know if anyone had any drug use of people and their family members, but there are always some time of relapse. And if it's so openly like that, and I know they're saying they want to get theirself together and I understand is, I'm probably biased in that fact, but what I'd like to say is, we do have a lot of older people in our neighborhood. And we are already concerned, we have a group of people that just moved in recently, that they be having lots of loud parties and we go over there as older people to try to get them to calm down or whatever, and they disrespect us so greatly. And I'm not saying that that would have happened with whoever the substance abuse people are, but I just, as she said, we want to feel safe in our neighborhood. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-25-09. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Okay, as we look at additional discussion, first we have Commissioner Curry?
My concern is always safety for everyone's neighborhood. My concern is always ensuring the safety of people in everyone's neighborhood. But I want us to get the stigma that everybody who's on substance abuse is violent and is a criminal. I spent my life, 22 years in this field of ensuring the work that I do is sufficient and making sure these people come back into society. My statement is not going for or against this, but I do want to make this statement openly. Because having people in my family who has dealt with drugs and been a certified substance abuse counselor myself for over 10 years of helping people with substance abuse issues, it is our job not to put them in a facility, is to put them back in an environment to where they were from. We know why many people have used drugs, trauma, stuff happened in their childhood that they cannot get past and, and we hear that and we understand second chances, but I want to make sure that we're not projecting when we say things out of our mouths, saying we want just to be safe, that everyone who's on substance abuse, because I have some of the greatest clients, who's never been in any violent trouble. And I know people who are not on substance abuse who are the worst people in the world. And so I want to make sure that we're not putting a stigma on our people who deserves a second chance like we do, to say, I want to be safe because they're dealing with a substance issue that they're violent or they have some type of violent, or criminals that were disturbed here. I hear everything you're saying, but I do want us to make sure we walk away from this meeting with a different mindset of looking at people who are trying to heal and recover like all of us from some type of trauma. Thank you.
Commissioner Jigges?
Yes. I want to go on record as saying I will be voting against this. You have to look at it holistically. And in looking at this holistically, the, the neighborhood, the residents of the neighborhood, the children, this is not the location that should be approved. Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion from the commissioners? I'll make a quick statement. I did state earlier, I do live on a street near a similar facility as a father of two, boy and a girl, both under the ages of 12 for a couple more weeks at least. And we've had no issues. I do have other concerns with the application, with the particular facility. So that, that's more of my concern than the, than, than the services you offer. I just think the, the amount of people we're squeezing into the size, the square footage tends to be a little difficult, tends to be a little tight, especially given the age of that, of that house and everything like that. So I think, think there's opportunities. I do understand the difference between a commercial and a residential treatment center, so understand why putting it in a residential makes sense. But I do encourage you all to continue looking in Portsmouth if this does not pass for other facilities that might work a little bit better.
Can we stop saying facility, it's a home?
Home, I'm sorry.
It's not a facility.
Yes, commercial was facility, this is all.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that was actually my first point I was trying to make and I went back on it, so I do, thank you for the clarification. But that, with that being said, we will, we are entertaining a motion in a second. Commissioner Curry?
I so moved to deny UP-25-09.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, Madam Secretary?
Thank you, we have a motion and a second to deny UP-25-09 and you will be voting electronically. This motion is denied by a vote of five to one.
Madam Secretary, I believe this concludes our agenda for today.
That is correct.
Commissioners, will, will there be any further business? Dr. Russell, any additional business?
Apologies, I had my mic off. Is there any additional business, Dr. Russell? Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.